Thank you. We've got a joyous crowd here tonight. We appreciate you being here and we're glad you participate in county government. We want to welcome everybody to our February 22nd County Commission meeting. I'm going to call on Commissioner Hancock to lead us in the invocation and the pledge if you'd like to stand, please.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, dear Lord. Thank you for all the opportunities that you give us, dear Lord, especially the opportunity to gather and to be able to speak our minds and be able to be objective and be able to be strong and do the things that we need to strengthen our community. Dear Lord, thank you for our military. Thank you for our government. Be with our soldiers and their families. Dear Lord, all these things I ask in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into our business tonight, we've got a little special issue we need to deal with right quick. I'm going to ask Commissioner Wallace if she would lead us in that, please.
Yes. Well, Chief Mark Wallace, I know he is back there somewhere. There he is, Chief Mark Wallace.[98.32][98.32](Laughter) For those of you who do not know Chief Mark Wallace, he is such a wonderful person, but today is a special day for him and it's his 60th birthday. So, we want to sing happy birthday to him. So, if you will all please join with me singing happy birthday.
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear
Mark, I had nothing to do with that. You can kill your sister-in-law later.[148.62][148.62](Laughter)
Happy birthday.
Okay, moving on into our business, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Wallace, second by Maxie to approve our agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have two people signed up for public participation tonight. Please be cognizant of our rules when you come up. If you'll give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to address the subject you'd like to talk about. The first one is Mr. Rayburn, or Ms. Rayburn.
My name is Rhonda Rayburn. I live at 105 Friar Tuck. I'm here in regards to Sherwood Forest and the drainage problem yet. On January the 20th, I called and put a work order in at the Public Works to have the drainage easements, which runs along the road of the ditch, I mean, I'm sorry, the ditches of the road, all over Sherwood Forest cleaned out. We have very serious drainage problems. I went out and started working in my yard. I saw a lady two doors down from me. Her name is Amy. I walked down and asked her to make the same call requesting the same thing. There's power in numbers. Her response to me was, "I'll call Allison Waters. She's a friend of mine." I said, "Do both."
She did.
Yes, she did. She sure did. So, two weeks later, I found out that they came out and cleaned out just Amy's ditches.
They cleaned out down by the road.
I'm sorry.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but they did, I saw them down by the main road down there, so.
I was told by Public Works Director that that's what they did and that yours, your work order was bumped up over mine. And these were my words to him. I do not care who asked for that to happen. What I care is that that looks like corruption, and it does. When you favor, when you favor one person over everyone else in the county, that's corruption at its finest, okay? Doesn't have to be millions of dollars in order for it to be corruption, but it looks like it, and that's why people don't trust y'all. So, I called and I talked to the Director, who had sent out a crew the next day, and I specifically told Michael Sking that I wanted the entire neighborhood done, not my, just my house, or the people in front of me, or Friar Tuck, but the whole neighborhood. They came out, they cleaned mine, the one next door, and Amy's again, and the water started flowing when they did because they did it with a backhoe or whatever the thing was that they actually dug out the ditch. There's two main drainage easements in Sherwood Forest. Mr. Maxie, I think you've had the same problem with Garden Lakes. They say they're not responsible for it. I don't know who would be. If it's not us, which it's not, I went to the map room and pulled the plat. I couldn't get anything done about anything, so I called Scotty after nobody would return my phone calls. Now, they have caller ID, and I called all day on Wednesday. They wouldn't even answer my call. So, I called Scotty. I sent him pictures. I sent him the plat, and I asked him if he could do something about it. He called me back. This was a text. He called me back immediately, immediately, and said, "I'll do what I can." Several years ago, I asked for a porta potty. If you don't, if you'll remember, Rhonda, you were standing with Sammy Ridge when I asked for that, and I think you said to me, "That'll never happen." I don't know if you remember or not. A year later, I got a text message. "You want a porta potty out behind State Mutual Stadium for the walkers still?" I said, "Yes." Called Scotty. I did. He immediately called me back, and in a week, it was done. He's doing everything for the people in this county that he can. And I'm not saying that y'all aren't, but I'm saying that your actions don't look like it, and your actions speak a whole lot louder than your words do. And these people behind me are here to talk to y'all about this zoning because y'all want housing in the city and the county, and that's fine. But if you can't take care of what you already have, why do you want to add to it? They have not been out to clean, and I've still got the pictures on my phone if any of y'all would care to see it. One drainage ditch on the easement of the road is full of debris where someone has cleaned out their trees.
Ms. Rayburn, your time has expired. I'm sorry. We do hold to the three minutes.
No problem. I think everybody's got the gist of what I'm here for.
We got it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Michael Morgan.
Greetings, Chairman. My name is Michael Morgan. I live at 1235 Radio Springs Road, and first thing I'd like to do is thank all of you citizens for showing up and participating in Rockville. I think coming to these meetings on a regular basis for almost a year now, this is the biggest little house we've seen. So, thank you. Please, we'd like to participate. Okay, I've brought up a couple of times about the state constitution and its origins of the government, the two sentence that describes why the government exists and what their duties are to be servants and trustees of the people. Chairman Bagby, I have a question specifically for you. I'm going to read a quote, and I want, I would like to know if you can tell me where that quote came from. Since the existence of a servant implies a master, the public is necessarily the master, and the public servant is charged with the duty of tending to the interests of the citizens. I'm not asking for a page number and a paragraph number. I'm just asking for a document.
Yeah, I can't tell you.
I open the question to any of the other seated board members. Okay, so you all can be informed, that quote comes from the County Commissioner's Handbook that is published by the state of Georgia. Okay? It's only available in PDF format. Otherwise, I would have a stack of them available to hand out to each one of you. I would like to make a proposal for a resolution, whatever the mechanism is, to get it brought to consideration, that every seated Commissioner should pass a written exam of a score of 75% or better on the contents of that handbook for the county commissioners, because that would give you the parameters at which you're elected to perform your duties, okay? And the fact that none of you could identify that quote is, should be deplorable in your own minds, okay? I'm just a plain citizen, okay? I do my homework before I come in here, all right? So, I encourage you all to go out and study the County Commissioner's Handbook, okay? And challenge yourselves to make it official as a requirement. I have to take certifications for the FAA to do my job. Our county elections officers have to be certified by the state to prove their aptitude to do their job. When I joined the military, I had to take an aptitude test to determine my availability and my aptitude to perform the job. All I'm doing is asking you folks to do the same. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you being here tonight. The next thing is to approve our minutes from our last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, they stand approved as submitted. We have some very special recognitions tonight, and we're going to do this. There are three citizens who are being recognized tonight. Mr. McCord is going to read those, and we've got a little memento to give you, and then if you'd like an opportunity to, to speak for a few minutes afterwards, we'd be glad to do that. We're going to come down front so that we can be near you when you do this.
Okay, our first presentation tonight is Dr. Robert Stein Howard. Dr. Howard was nominated by Allison Waters, Jenny Krueger, and Cassandra Wheeler. Dr. Howard is a true trailblazer. She was the first black female pediatrician in Floyd County in 1995. She works at the Harbin Clinic and has been a partner there since 1997. In addition to being a full-time working wife and mother, she serves as Chairwoman of the Credentialing Committee at Harbin Clinic. She's the Pediatric Clerkship Director for the Northwest District of the Medical College of Georgia. She is an Associate Professor at the Medical College of Georgia and was voted Educator of the Year by her students. She served on the Board of Directors at Unity Christian School and served as Chairman of the Board for many years. She has been an active member of St. Mary's Catholic Church since 1995, where she serves as a Eucharistic minister among other volunteer positions. She volunteered at Haven Health Clinic for several years as well. Dr. Howard has been caring for babies and children for 26 years in greater Roman Floyd County. She has also been taking care of moms and dads as well. Dr. Howard, Dr. Howard puts everyone she meets and sees at ease. She is the voice of calm and in many cases, in very difficult situations. She is an excellent physician and has served many so well in our community. Dr. Howard is married to Dr. Ken Howard, also a partner with Harbin Clinic. She is a mother and grandmother and is an avid reader and enjoys time with her family, especially her grandbabies. Let's give her a warm round of applause.
I just wanted to add one little comment. I guess, Rob, it was almost 21 years ago I was pregnant with my first child, and I met Rob at a retreat, and I was thinking, "Who am I going to get for our pediatrician?" And within five minutes, I'm like, "If she'll be our doctor, she's the one." And so, for almost 21 years, she's been caring for our whole family of four, even though we only have two kids. We appreciate you.
Mr. Gary Allen Jones II.
Nominated by Desiree Jones. The nomination for recognition by the Floyd County Commission is based on the following. Gary is consistently helping others. He has a passion for volunteering and helping our community. He currently teaches gifted children through sixth grade students. Gary is an outstanding teacher and has been recognized as such several times. He was East Central Teacher of the Year, Rome City Schools Teacher of the Year, Top 10 finalist for Georgia Teacher of the Year, Walmart Teacher of the Year, Georgia Economic Teacher of the Year, and Environmental Teacher of the Year. He has organized and led so many activities at East Central, such as the Chess Club, Underground Railroad Experience for Black History Month, Toys for Tots, Pennies for Patience, 47 Acts of Kindness Project, CRBI Quiz Bowl Team Sponsor. Gary's students won first, second, and third place in the Stock Market Challenge this school year. He prides himself in providing real-world experiences for his students. In one such experience, he was in the paper for arranging for his students to have an Italian pen pal class in the spring of 2020 when students were learning digitally. Mr. Jones' students were able to speak with their pen pal class and meet them virtually via Zoom. He has been a volunteer coach for the YMCA for 15 years, also volunteers regularly at Rome Little Theater, and has been in several productions, including playing Scarecrow in The Wizard of Oz and acting in Secret Garden and Clyborne Park. His significant achievements, recognitions, honors, community activities, strengths, and special qualities are too many to list. Gary is an outstanding citizen of Roman Floyd County and has definitely made an impact on our community. Let's give him a warm round of applause. And our next guest, Chris Twiman. Chris was nominated by Scotty Hancock. Chris Twiman is a native of Rome, Georgia. Currently serves as managing partner of the law firm Cox, Bynington, Twiman, LLP in Rome, Georgia. Mr. Twiman is a graduate of East Rome's High School, class of 1992, and served as president of his class. He received his Bachelor's of Arts degree from Georgetown University in 1996, where he majored in government and minored in history. He attained his Juris Doctorate degree from the University of Georgia Law School in 1999. Mr. Twiman was admitted to the State Bar of Georgia in 1999. He is admitted to practice in all Georgia trial and appellate courts, the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, and the United States Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit and the United States Supreme Court. Mr. Twiman has also been admitted pro hoc vice to represent clients in the state and federal courts in Alabama, Tennessee, and South Carolina. Mr. Twiman has served as lead counsel and co-counsel on several local and national cases of interest. His cases have been featured on Court TV, NBC Dateline, and Discovery ID, as well as in multiple print medias. In addition to serving as managing partner, Mr. Twiman leads litigation practice at Cox, Bynington, Twiman, and Twiman. Mr. Twiman has been recognized for his accomplishments in the field of law. He was named the Georgia Super Lawyers Honoree in 2021. Less than 5% of Georgia lawyers are recognized as super lawyers and was named Georgia Super Lawyers Rising Star 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. In 2018, Mr. Twiman was named to a shortlist of nominees for appointment to the Georgia Court of Appeals. In 2017, Mr. Twiman was elected to the State Bar of Georgia Board of Governors, which governs and sets policy for Georgia's 50,000 lawyers. He currently serves as Chair of the Professional Liability Insurance Study Committee and Vice Chair of the Committee on Insurance. In 2019, the Georgia Supreme Court appointed Mr. Twiman to serve on the Office of Bar Admissions Board to determine fitness of bar applicants and currently serves as the Fitness Board's Vice Chair. Mr. Twiman is married to the former Tasha Nicole Ingram. They have two children, Lauren, Krit, Lauren Krista, and Miles Christopher. Let's give a warm round of applause to Mr. Twiman.
Continuing with our order of business, we have no proclamations tonight and no first readings. We have two items that are here for public hearings and, and second readings tonight where action will be taken. And I'd like to go over the rules of our public hearings with you just right quick. Our Planning Commission, Bryce Wood, will come up and read the report from the Planning Commission. After that's done, we will open the public hearing, and those wishing to speak in affirmative will have up to 10 minutes. That's 10 cumulative minutes, so if there are a group of you that need to speak, be cognizant of the others and leave them time. Then, the opposition will have the same timeframe to speak, and after that, we'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to Commissioner Maxie, who is our representative on the Planning Commission, to give us a motion for our consideration. So, Bryce, if you would take the first item.
Yes, sir. All right, the first request is File Z22-02-02. It requests rezoning from heavy industrial to a split zoning of suburban residential multifamily at Zero Calhoun Highway, Floyd County Tax Parcel L11Z003. Applicant, Seven Lights Investment LLC. Owner, Hermitage Partners LLC. Let's see, I'm going to click through this. This is the property outlined in red. It has frontage on Hermitage Road as well as Old Calhoun Highway, a small sliver. It's approximately 52 acre, or 52 acres in size. It's certainly, it's currently heavy industrial, as is most of the property across Hermitage. The area below it is a farm, which is zoned agricultural. You have the railroad tracks to the west. You have Old Calhoun Road to the east. That is the zoning map as it currently sits. The picture at the bottom is looking into the parcel from Hermitage, looking back down the road towards Old Calhoun and the opposite direction towards 53, across the street at the industrial site. The bottom picture there shows the ULDC requires a 200-foot buffer anytime you have heavy industrial adjacent to residential. In this case, it'd be the farm below. That 200-foot buffer just about cuts the property into about a quarter of it. You also have to take into account that there's a creek that runs through the property. That also makes development more complicated. I believe, if I understand it correctly, the property's been marketed as industrial for several years with no takers because of these challenges, including the overall shape of the property. This is the staff report. This is a picture of the proposed homes. These were provided by the applicant. The request was for, let's see, 121 single-family homes and 207 townhomes. The property would be split along the creek. As you can see, 30.9 acres would be dedicated to single-family, 121 proposed lots. The anticipated price range, you see that constructed in three phases. Just another rendering. You can see the site plan on the left side of the creek up in the top. Some more architectural renderings. Now, we're getting on to the multifamily side. That would be on the right side of the creek, which would be 21.9 acres, 207 proposed townhomes. You can see the price range there. Once again, constructed in three phases. You can also see the site plan. This is only possible because there is sewer in the area that's surfacing the industrial sites. And let's see, this does come with a recommendation of approval from staff on the condition that the properties be split along the creek for the two different zoning districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Bryce? If not, we will open the public hearing, and I'll ask for any that would, would like to speak in favor of this proposal, to please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have a cumulative 10 minutes.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square, Cardinalsville, Georgia. I represent your applicant tonight. We have presented this afternoon a request that this application be withdrawn without prejudice. We became aware today of some concerns that have been raised that we would like to, some time to try to address, but we can't address them tonight. And so, we want the opportunity to go back to the drawing board and see if we can resolve these, talk with the folks that are interested, and come up with a, a solution that serves everybody. So, we have submitted that. We would ask that you grant that without prejudice so that we have time to do that. That said, we agree with the staff analysis that Mr. Wood just presented to you. Particularly, you know, this property, it has a very intensive zoning district, which you would think would be very valuable, but when you're looking you would think would be very valuable, but when you're looking at a piece of property that has such substantial buffers and the creek on it, that makes it very difficult to use in an economically viable manner. So we're trying to reach a solution that allows for that. In addition, we're trying to address some concerns that I've heard numerous times when I've come to Floyd County about housing and the housing stocks that's available. So that's what we're trying to do. We hope that you will give us a little bit of time to do that and grant this, grant this request to withdraw without prejudice. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Bowen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the affirmative?
Dan Carlton, Tolstemp on the right, represent the buyers as a broker for the property. As Brandon was saying, we presented some information today. Y'all were as well, and we're trying to digest that information. So all we're asking is some time to try to figure it out. Here's the thing, in that area, I've combed that entire area, looking for property for housing, and we know we need it. It was in the paper last week, we got a huge shortage, 19,000 people working here, living outside the county. We need these houses. And I know this isn't perfect, and I know there's people that are against this, but all we're asking is let us have an opportunity to try to work some of these differences out. Some of this information we got today, we haven't had a chance to even verify any of it. We were just thrown on. So all we're saying is give us a little time to see, and if it turns out that this is not doable, hey, it's not doable. But all we're asking is that, out of fairness, because we don't have any other housing opportunities in that area, I can tell you they're not there. All the land, none that's for sale that has sewer or is developable. And for us to have an opportunity to do housing in that area, this is it. And if it, just don't discount it, say, no, we're not even gonna give you a chance. At least give us an opportunity for the next zoning to see if we can work these differences out and find out some of this information, work through it. That's all we're asking. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the affirmative? If not, we will have the opposition, it'll have the same amount of time and be aware. If there are many, several people that want to speak, to please try to allow them to do that. If you'll come to the podium, give us your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Burns. I live at 1646 Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, and I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and all of the Rush family in opposition to this development that they are requesting to be withdrawn. First, I want to just let it be known that we are advocates of our community, and we support growth and healthy growth with good homes for people. We want people to come and live there and have a great life in that area, which we have enjoyed for a long time. Our opposition is strongly based on the density of this subdivision and how it does not fit with the comprehensive plan of Roman Floyd County. The comprehensive development plan outlines character areas for our community, and this property falls in the rural commercial quarter. In that area, that's, you know, there is industrial development. There are a lot of commercial sites. However, it is intended to maintain the character of the rural countryside. When you refer back to the comprehensive development plan, there's nothing in there, nothing in there that supports multifamily, high-density developments of this nature. This would be as large as, I could not find one this large with this many units, even in the city. We just feel like it doesn't fit, not only the density, but the location. It is surrounded by the industrial park, and then on the other side, the agricultural industry, which is my family's farm. One side of the neighborhood is ordered by the railroad, which runs, we checked into that, and it runs about 15 trains from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And we just don't feel like that would be a very good place for people to live. And long-term, we do not see it as an investment in our community for the long-term. There are several people here tonight who, from the community, who have been very interested, and I would like to submit on their behalf a petition. And I would like to ask everyone who is here, who is opposed to a development of this nature in the city. If you would just give it a regular. Now I'm going to let Mr. Greg Hopkins speak.
I'm Greg Hopkins, for Old Shorter Hill, really close to Wright-Bagby. We sent all of you an email yesterday from our Board of Directors about our opinion and how we feel about this development and the rezoning. We don't feel we will be a good neighbor. We're an industrial plant. We make biodiesel, we make renewable chemicals, and we make noise. Occasionally, we make odors. We have a tremendous amount, on good days, we have a tremendous amount of truck traffic and a lot of rail traffic. When we get a rail switch, we shut down Hermitage Road for about five minutes. I can't imagine a lot of people heading out to school or work at the time we're getting a rail switch. Traffic and noise will be our big issues that we will cause for the neighborhood. They'll cause traffic issues for us. But I'd like to draw your attention to the next-to-last paragraph of what we sent. We are right now in the engineering phase and grant application phase for about a, I think it's a $13 million expansion. If we don't have resolution on this, soon, we have other plans we can take this to. We have plans throughout the southeast, west coast, and northeast. And I need resolution taken by the Board of Directors. I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there others that would like to speak in opposition? We have a few minutes left.
I'm Carrie Harris. I live at 3661 Blacks Bluff Road. My farm is on Blacks Bluff there, across from the end of Livingston Road. I'd just like to speak on behalf of agriculture in Floyd County, namely, the Farm Bureau and the Cattlemen's Association. And rezoning these acres from heavy industrial to suburban residential multifamily is strictly gonna be spot zoning. It'll do the exact opposite, in my opinion, of what the ULDC and the zoning was designed to do. It'll take away the very protections that these ordinances were designed to provide for the industry, the agriculture, and potential residents. It'll put 325 houses between industrial operations and a family farming operation with six broiler houses and beef cattle operation. Anytime you've got a farming operation that's big enough for a family to survive on and make a living with, which is what this country was founded on, it's better suited to be adjacent to industry. We can get along with them better than we can a lot of residences. If you look back at when the comprehensive plan was first proposed, and all the focus groups were started, and people met, and they said that one thing that was good about Roman Floyd County was retaining the small-town rural character. A common theme that the residents don't want is to become a part of Atlanta. We don't want to lose the character of Floyd County and the rural nature of what's out there beyond. We appreciate Broad Street, we appreciate downtown Rome, it's a viable part of the community. Outside there, we want to retain some of that natural beauty and agriculture as a part of it. If you look back on page eight, it says, "Retain agriculture by reducing encroachment of incompatible uses. Agriculture is still desired use in Floyd County. Viable agricultural operations are threatened by residential encroachment. Noises, dust, odors from normal agricultural operations can be nuisances to rural residences. To protect existing agricultural operations, the county should minimize potential conflicts between agricultural operations and rural residences, where rural residential development is appropriate. Conservation should be done to protect that." Agriculture is desirable. It's also a big part of the economy, to the tune of almost $85 million, according to the latest UGA Farm Gate report. According to that same report, there are 547 farms in Floyd County that provide those families a multi-generational way of making a living and a way of life that's worth protecting. When the roll is called, you take your vote, you need to support those folks in agriculture. We're a viable part of this community. You're either gonna support us, or you're not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is about a minute and 50 seconds left. If anybody else would like to speak in opposition. If not, Mr. Bowen, you saved a little bit of time. Do you, would you like to use that for any rebuttal?
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, we have heard these concerns, and the reason we are asking for this withdrawal without prejudice to be granted is so that we can address these concerns, both looking at the industrial concerns that were raised, and also the density concerns. We understand there's a density concern, and we want to look at how we can resolve that concern. Because this is a split zoning, I don't think we're positioned to be able to just drop part of it tonight. I think we've got to refile it in a new way to fix that, which is what, you know, I think we're thinking about doing. But that does, it takes time, and that's why we're asking for you to grant us that time to do that, and let us address these concerns, and try to bring you a product that you can be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now close the public hearing, and I will ask Commissioner Maxey for a motion on the request to withdraw.
I would like to reject the request to withdraw this motion. I'd like to motion to deny this request.
Okay, the motion by Commissioner Maxey is to deny the request to withdraw. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hancock. Is there discussion among the commissioners?
So if we vote yes, then are we saying we're gonna have another motion?
Yes, if you vote in favor of Commissioner Maxey's motion, it would open the floor for another motion.
Is that correct, Chris? Is that what?
I think that's right. Essentially, right now, you're, Mr. Bowen has filed with this body an application to withdraw without prejudice, and essentially, what Mr. Maxey's motion for is to deny his motion to withdraw, which then you could consider the underlying issue of whether to grant or deny
The zoning.
The zoning application with or without prejudice as well.
Great. Okay, does that answer, Rhonda? Okay, seeing no further hands for discussion, we have a motion in a second to deny the request to withdraw. Ms. L. Rodd, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters.
Yes.
Chair Bagby.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Maxey, the floor is still yours.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request without prejudice.
Okay, the motion is to deny the original zoning request without prejudice. Mr. Jackson, would you like to make sure the audience knows what that means?
I can. A denial without prejudice is a denial which means this terminates the application. This application is terminated, but it does not prevent this property, this parcel, from there being an application for any other sort of rezoning on this parcel for the next 12 months, which otherwise, if you were to deny this request outright, no other zoning, according to our current Unified Land Development Code, no further zoning request could be made related to this piece of property for the next 12 months. So this leaves that parcel or piece of property with further option, whether that is by these people or by any other possible buyer. It would allow anyone to possibly say, hey, you know, this may not work as heavy industrial based on what the staff has said, but it may work as something else, whether that's suburban residential, whether that's light industrial, whatever it may be. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Waters. Is there further discussion from the commission? If not, Ms. L. Rodd, would you please call the roll? If you vote in favor of this motion, you're voting to deny the request for rezoning.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, which means they can come back, anybody can come back for change of zoning.
That's correct.
Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters.
Yes.
Chair Bagby.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of you that are here. We have one more public hearing, which will not take very long, and I'm gonna ask you, even though most of you are here for this item that's just passed, if you just hold on a minute, we'll take a little break so that you can leave if you'd like to. I'd also like to congratulate, thank everybody for their respectful way of presenting their ideas and thoughts. It means a lot to us. So Bryce, if you'd move on to the second item.
Yes, sir. The next item is Z21-1-1. Request rezoning from suburban residential to community commercial located at Zero Rockmark Highway, Floyd County Tax Parcels K17085, K17086, K17087. Applicant: Jim Givens. Owner: Ashley Evans Development LLC. These are the parcels outlined in red. They are where Old Rockmark Road and 101 merge back together. The three properties combined are about 1.3 acres. As you can see, the zoning around it is predominantly suburban residential. There are a couple of community commercials spots further up the road, one or two parcels up. This is a speculative rezoning. We don't know what it's being rezoned for, and that's always concerning. We also took into account the fact that there is no sewer in the area, so the types of commercial that could happen are very limited. We also took into account the fact that GDOT has plans to widen that road, which would further shrink that pizza pie-shaped parcel. I believe we were told at Planning Commission, and forgive me, I was not there, but I believe we were told that there's possibility, the possibility of a national retailer coming. The types of retailers that would go in that area typically build 5,000 to 7,000 square-foot stores. Once you widen that road, that becomes incredibly tight, and will likely need one or more variances, if it's possible at all. Picture at the bottom is looking into the parcel. The one on the right is also looking into the parcel from the other road. This is the plat of the parcel. Staff report. Staff is also concerned about the proliferation of just, you know, commercial all up and down our currently rural agricultural corridors. We already have commercial down at the intersection of Wax Road and 101, so you already have kind of a rural village node there. This was submitted by the applicant. I can't read that. That is the application itself. Warranty deed for the property. Unfortunately, I cannot read that either. This was all submitted by the applicant. This does come with a recommendation of denial from staff. We were worried that, you know, of what type of commercial may go there. Given the track record we have, it's very likely to be a convenience store of some sort. We were also worried about the residential character of the surrounding properties. This did come with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and that was a four-to-three vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. We will now open the public hearing on this. I think everyone knows I think everyone knows the rules now, and so I would ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this proposal, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Thank you, members of the panel. I'm Jim Givens, 16 Commerce Court, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Gary Evans. He's owner of Ace Hardware in Lindell, along with Larry Ashley, who's the owner of PSG Construction Company. These gentlemen have acquired this site. They've assembled it together. They actually bought some land from the county to put all this together at the intersection of Rockmart Road and Old Rockmart Road. Now, when they acquired the site, it was occupied by an abandoned house. They have since cleaned that house off the property. At the time they had bought it, the property was being occupied by homeless people. The property does front Georgia Highway 101, or what we know as Rockmart Road, for about 450 feet, and there's 500 feet of the property on the Old Rockmart Road. Now, the question about zoning in the area, there is a commercially zoned tract within 75 feet of this property, north on Highway 101. Now, it does front both sides, both roads. It's a very comparable tract. The proposed use of community commercial here allows for a retail store, and it is their intent to try and land a national discount retailer on this site. Let me put this property in perspective from a retail angle. The nearest discount retailer to this site is located on Dean Street. Think East Central School. I'm not calling any names of stores, but that makes this site six miles away from a discount retailer. How many of y'all live within six, more than six miles away from a discount retailer? I'd say probably very few of us. Now, the discount retailer that's located there, if you go to the south, the next discount retailer is in Aragon, outside of Pope County. There are four existing convenience stores along this path, but a national discount retailer is going to offer a much broader product line and a much less expensive items than a convenience store. Now, the traffic count here, according to the Georgia DOT website, somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,000 cars a day. Now, let me tell you what else we found out. I met last week with Jordan Clement at the DOT office on Dean Street. There are no plans to widen this area of Rockmart Road in the DOT's work scope. So this idea that the DOT is going to widen it, lessen it, not in our lifetime. It's not going to happen. Okay? So that refutes that. There is no A-cell, B-cell lane required on this property, because they would be entering the property, entering the storefront, if you will, from the Old Rockmart Road. And the applicant has no trouble pushing that entrance as far north on Old Rockmart Road as possible to get it further away from any traffic interference with Rockmart Road. It does not require curb cut, and therefore, we could enter on the Rockmart Road. This area is the densest populated rural area in Floyd County. According to the post office records, at Silver Creek Post Office, they're just always been the densest area. There's a lot of subdivisions out here, not one under a great umbrella developed like a Garden Lakes. But when you start talking about Ridgewood, Racks Road, Silver Mine, Rain Tree, there's just numerous houses, rooftops out there, and they're not served by a national discount retailer. To give you some experience of why this site was purchased, Mr. Ashley constructs national discount retailers. Right now, he's got active projects in Mississippi, Alabama, and Tennessee. So, we think it's a good site for this, and we would hope that y'all would grant us this request for zoning to CC. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll ask if there are those here who'd like to speak in opposition.
I'm Dennis Young, from 1786 Old Rockmart Road. I provided a presentation. I'm not sure if that is available to everyone, or if it's going to be.
Yes, sir. If you could just, before, if you could go to the next page.
I currently own property. It's really a 17-acre farm on the Old Rockmart Road. And before I continue, thank you for your time, and if I have difficulty in communication getting fitted for some urinate, so bear with me. If you go to the next slide, on February 3, at the Planning Commission, the following false claims were made by Jim Givens and Ashley Evans in support of rezoning, and it was that it would increase the employment in the area. There are no other type businesses in the area, and other businesses were actually on the Old Rockmart Road, and that there was a community need. The reality is, there's only potentially five to six employees that will be added to this location. There are two other similar businesses in the same industry segment within five to seven miles from this location. There's one that's actually, has a greater square footage of service area than what this property is capable of producing. And there are no other businesses on the Old Rockmart Road, and there are currently three convenience stores within a linear mile, so this would be the fourth retail shop. The real argument is, will a retail-saturated section of Highway 101 benefit from more corporations? Is it my right to expect residential community to stay that way, since it's always been? Will the environment be impacted? Something I want to expand on on Slide 8. And will one of the deadliest intersections on the Rockmart Highway become even worse? This area was, when I purchased it, and I grew up on it, it was expected to stay residential, and that was the plans I made. My grandfather built, or rebuilt, the oldest home on this property on the Old Rockmart Road in the 1940s. There are approximately 72 homes within one mile northwest on the Old Rockmart Road from this property. And my biggest concern is the water runoff. I have a farm pond, and I'm about to begin prepping for retirement and increasing the utilization of the property with cattle, repairing the fence and the infrastructure. So, point one, there are presumed three lots for commercial rezoning at this location. I'm assuming all of those lots will be paved in some capacity, and the runoff is a consideration for me, or a liability in my case. I've been in touch with FEMA's flood map service to help me determine the impact and help with any future litigation that I may pursue. The property is located at 860 feet, that is, below an area 960 feet east of Highway 101, meaning there's a direct current of floodwater coming across that property, as well as there's a 20 to 30-foot drop at a 90-degree angle from Highway 101 onto the property before it gets to the Old Rockmart Road. And there, most notably, there was one lawsuit settled 30 feet away from this property for the same runoff claims. Selfishly, I am concerned about the property investment, being at age 60, being, having some of the plans for utilization of this farm, but also have traffic concerns for the intersection at the Road, Old Rockmart Road and Rockmart Highway, which has had a number of fatalities. And in closing, I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate everyone's attention. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I would ask Commissioner Maxey to address the issue, please.
Wait, wait one second.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Givens, have you got a little time?
Yeah, there's more time left.
Yeah, just a little bit, Jim.
I don't know how much time. You've got five minutes and 30 seconds.
The only thing I'd have to say there, the owner would fully comply in regard to drainage and runoff. They would be required, and they would graciously comply with all drainage requirements of the Georgia Environmental Department. No trouble with that. Do it everywhere they build. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I missed that. If there's no further section, questions or speakers, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxey for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the special stipulation that the driveway be moved to the north side of the property.
Thank you. The motion by Commissioner Maxey is to approve the request with the movement of the entry driveway as far north as possible on the property.
Second.
It's the second by Commissioner Wallace. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Once again, we're going to take just a few minutes to let you depart, although if you would love to stay with us for more exciting stuff, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to have you, and I'll ask you to do us a favor, if you would, try to hold your conversation in the hall till you get down the steps, so that we can move on with the business. But anybody that'd like to leave, please feel free to do so.
They didn't hear what you said.
If we could call our meeting back into order, so we can conduct the rest of the business.
Where are we at?
Tom, if you can shut those doors back there, it would help. Okay, moving on with our business, we have no resolutions tonight. Under the chairman's report, we have a couple of items that we need some action on. We'd like to consider reappointing Stuart Nesslin to the Floyd County Alcohol Control Commission. This term will expire August 31, 2024. We'd like to consider reappointing Spencer Brewer to the Floyd County Alcohol Control Commission. That term will expire August 31, 2025. Consider reappointing Lynn Belvin to the Floyd County Alcohol Commission. This term will expire August 31, 2025. Could I have a motion to appoint these three people to the Alcohol Control Commission?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace, to approve the first three nominees. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Thank you very much. I'd like to
Motion carries.
Yes, that means. She didn't say yes, she said thank you very much.
Well, it was 4-0.
It does carry, Bob. I'm just checking it.
Just checking my pulse, okay. The second item is to consider appointment to the Airport Commission to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Rick Swiger. The term, we would like to reappoint Dr. Swiger, term to expire on June 30 of 2024. Do I have a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock, to approve Dr. Swiger being reappointed. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. We have several other appointments that we'll probably be making at our next meeting, and we hope that anybody that's listening, if you have an interest in any of our committees, will fill out the volunteer form and put your name in consideration for these posts. Do any of the commissioners have any reports to make from their committee assignments or boards that they serve on?
Yeah, I do want to just announce that our public library will be in opening on Fridays from 10 to 2, which that hasn't happened in about 10 years, so we're excited to have them open on Fridays now, starting in May.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, anything from you?
No, sir, no report.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda. Mr. McCord or Ms. Elrod, would you like to present that?
The consent agenda has been reviewed and is in order, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The consent order is in consent
Consent agenda.
Is in order.
Consent agenda.
Something's in order.
Do we have a, do we have a motion on the consent?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxey, to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have nine items of new business, and I'll ask Mr. McCord to present those.
Yes, sir. Item one, consider recommendation from Parks and Recreation to approve partnership with GG Leagues for eSports League. These will include a budget revision of $250 to join the eSports League. This was not in the original 2022 budget, and Ron Parks and Recreation will receive 30% revenue share of the participant registration. This is kind of a unique and neat, unique experience, and I'm sorry to bring you a $250 budget revision, but it is a contract going forward, and this will be, these activities will take place at the Fielder Center, looking at a good use for that facility.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item one?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace, to approve item one. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, please.
Yes, sir. Consider recommendation from Parks and to purchase bonded rubber mulch for mulch outfitters in amount of $73,540 at Shag Williams Park, and I think also Midway Park. This amount is, again, $73,540, and this was budgeted through 2017 blocks. This was the low bidder.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item two?
Motion to
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxey, second by Commissioner Waters, to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Vice, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, consider recommendation from Parks and to approve purchase of six Police Pursuit Ford Explorer SUVs from Prater Ford in the amount of $206,580 for the police department. This quote's offered the fastest delivery time and was budgeted at $255,627 plus. The remaining 49,025 will be used for upfitting. This was the quickest delivery with 60 to 90 days, with some of the suppliers not being able to deliver until 2023.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item three?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock, to approve item three. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, consider recommendation from Parks and to approve the purchase of one Item four, consider recommendation from purchasing to approve the purchase of one F-150 Supercab pickup four by four from Prater Ford in amount of $29,575 for the tax assessor office, and consider budget revision of $35,75. This was budgeted at $26,027 floss. It was the low bid and a nine to 12 week delivery.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item four?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item four. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five is consider recommendation from purchasing to approve the cost and labor, and a cost, labor, and equipment to be provided by Willow Construction in the amount of $61,875 for the Kingston Well Road maintenance and repairs. This was budgeted $75,000 in 2021, but work did not begin until after 2021 and needs to be transferred to the 2022 water capital budget. This will include all the six inch well discharge piping and existing pump house base and buried valves outside the building.
Thank you. Is there a motion on, on item five?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxey to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six, consider recommendation from purchasing to approve the purchase of a US jetting Vector Ram Jet trailer from Environmental Products Group in amount of $80,780 for Public Works. This was budgeted at $100,000 in the 2017 floss budget, and this was procured through state bid. We do have 60 to 90 days' delivery on this product.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item six?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item six. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven, consider recommendation from purchasing to purchase a 10 passenger Ford van from Wade Ford in the amount of $36,650 for the prison, at a budget revision of an additional $650. This was a 2021 used vehicle with only 500 miles, was budgeted in 2017 floss at $36,000, and is in stock.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item seven?
The motion is approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxey, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item six. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eight, consider recommendation from purchasing to approve purchase of two washers and two dryers from Southeast Laundry Equipment Sales Incorporated in the amount of $122,010 for the Floyd County Jail. This was budgeted at $93,730. The additional funds will be paid using IBF or inmate benefit fund in order to get the Unimac brand, although not the lowest bid. They are the only vendor that can provide these units, which is what is already in place at the jail. And to add to that, Unimac has 41 wash cycles versus the SP at 30. The warranty is 10 years versus five years. Also has programmable controls, automatic stop, wind dry, and parts availability is of utmost importance for these machines. They also have a 14-year life cycle, but we have one currently 24 years of aids.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item eight?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item eight. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item nine, consider request from the Rome Floyd Development Authority to approve a memorandum of understanding between Rome Floyd Development Authority, MDH, F2, ATL, Shannon LLC, The Hillman Group Incorporated, Floyd County, and the Board of Tax Assessors of Floyd County. This is a memorandum of understanding that shows the abatement resolu, the abatement terms at a total of $37 million in improvements. That's 34 million for the building, 3 million for the equipment, 50 new jobs, and 145 retained jobs. It has a 10-year abatement, and it'll also be a 37,500 pilot agreement over the 10-year period. There was significance to the retention of jobs in that this company was looking at other communities but decided to relocate here. So this is a recommendation to approve. It was approved by Rome Floyd Development Authority this past Friday.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item nine?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item nine. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no other business. We did go into executive session tonight in caucus to, to discuss a property matter, and no action was taken. Anything else to come before the group? If not, we stand adjourned.